All right, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order at 6:32, 5:32 PM on Tuesday, August 3rd. Could I have a roll call, please?
Joshang President.
Josh Sixton Duranian President.
Veronica Chow President. Please join me for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to their public religious stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded. It is also live on Channel 9, and it will be posted on YouTube after the meeting. As far as chairmans, auditions, and deletions go, I really don't have any. The executive session that is scheduled, is it scheduled for 6:15? Is probably not going to be necessary.
Right.
So, that's about the only thing I have there. Do either of you have anything? 1.5, couple of comments here. Yes, anybody else? Anybody else? Alright, so Steve, go ahead.
Ben Chairman, on behalf of myself and Townsend Access Media, my fellow board members, we'd like to issue the formal complaint against the Conservation Commissions for a meeting dated July 28th, where T-CAM was told to stop recording the meeting, which is in violation of the open meeting law. If you'd like, I can read it into record, or obviously you can read it into record. To the Honorable Board of Selectmen, on July 28, 2021, the Town and Townsend Conservation Commission held an open public meeting in Town Hall Meeting Room 2. T-CAM decided hardly question after recording the meeting with a video camera as part of our service to provide the citizens of Townsend with coverage of the activities of their local government, board, commission, boards, commissions, committees, and other events of public interest. Want to chair the Conservation Commission called the meeting to order, a member of the commission called for the chair of the commission to order Harley to stop recording the meeting. After small discussion between the various commission members, a vote was taken with the result being a majority of the commission voting in the affirmative to order Harley to stop recording the proceedings of the meeting. In order to not discuss any, not to cause any disruption of the commission's meeting, Harley complied with their order. According to Massachusetts Journal Law Part 1, Title III, Chapter 30A, Section 20, Subsection F, "After notifying the Chair of the public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of public body, or may transmit the meeting, transmit the meeting through any medium, subject to reasonable requirements of the Chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used, as to not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall also inform other attendees of any recordings." Also according to the Digital Media Law Protect Massachusetts Law on Recording Court Hearings in Public Meeting States, Massachusetts Open Meeting Law expressly permits the sound and video recording of public meetings, i.e. meetings of a governmental body required to be open to the public by law, except for executive sessions by anyone in attendance. The statute provides that after notifying the Chair of the public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of any open session of a meeting of a public body, or may transmit the meeting through any medium, subject to reasonable requirements of the Chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used to, as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. T-CAM finds complaint of noncompliance by the Conservation Commission with the Board of Selectmen along with the copy of the Town Clerk's Office, which has been delivered, that the Conservation Commission's actions were unlawful on the Massachusetts Journal Law, and was grievous and intentional violation of Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. T-CAM had reported this incident to our corporate attorney for the review and consideration for possible future legal action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment, hopefully everybody can hear me. Earlier today, the Senator's decision told for the next, that everyone in Middlesex County calling indoor buildings should be wearing the masks again. And in the interest of public safety and the COVID, the spread of COVID and the Delta, whatever it is.
Baron.
Baron is, that we, that I asked the Board of Selectmen to immediately to check the citizens' condition. And after looking at the data that was released last week, the Department of Public Health said the actual vaccination rate in the town of Townsend is still pretty low, just over 50% for white residents. 60% or something. But, that our vaccination rate is still pretty low, even with the vaccinated status that the variant is still spreading. And if it's true that people, whether they're vaccinated or not, as a citizen interested in the health of a private community, I would ask that we're supposed to make immediate action to protect all of us from further illness.
Thank you.
Cindy, I'll answer that. As soon as we get notified by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that we have to change anything that we've been doing, we'd be more than happy to comply. The most important interest is the well-being of the citizens. We have not been notified as the town of any such actions. There are rumbles, but as soon as we know, Cindy, we'll be happy to do that for you.
Alright, thank you very much. Moving on to 1.6, review and approve the meeting minutes for, it says TBD. I sent three executive sessions, July 27th, one of the sessions on that date, and then both of the sessions held yesterday. So, is there a motion to approve or amend, as the case may be?
I actually have not had a chance to look at them.
Okay, do you want to move on to Friday?
I.
And these are not yet to be reviewed?
Correct. I just, I had a chance to print them out, and that's as far as I could.
So by Friday, there will be more? Okay, thank you very much. Alright, with that, we have a 5:40 hearing, and we are right on time. It's the continuation of the hearing regarding removal of the Conservation Commission formerly the Chair. So, thank you very much. With that, I'm going to recuse myself.
Karen, let's come forward, please.
Alright, that's fine. Now you tell me.
Everybody's ready? Any others know? So, I'd like to start this meeting that I want everyone to try to be respectful, no yelling, no screaming. Whatever board decision that we make this evening will be a final decision. I don't want to discuss anything that was in the past. We're going to only discuss from the past 30 days when we sat in front of her in a group as to where we left off. So if there's going to be any input that's going to get brought into this meeting tonight, it's going to strictly be from that meeting forward. I would like to let Kate give a little presentation as an outline as to how we are going to move forward.
Right, so, yes, from the board's perspective, there are a few things that we'd like to investigate this evening of the hearing relative to what's occurred since the last hearing. There are a couple of concerning issues that have been raised. Specifically, we have been informed that following the meeting, Ms. Hill, in speaking with some of our members, indicated that desire to stay on the CONCOM was only for the single purpose of making the lives of Ms. Kell and Mr. Sexton Duranians difficult. The words were a little bit different than that, but one of the members of the Conservation Commission is intending on speaking to that this evening. So that's since the last hearing. In a recent meeting of the CONCOM that was actually alluded to earlier by this gentleman here, Ms. Hill instructed Harley to refrain from recording the meeting. Now, in some sense, whether or not that is a legally appropriate thing to do is separate and apart from what we're here to discuss today. More importantly for today, this shows an intent to support the goals and objectives of the Board of Selectmen mainly to ensure transparency of its appointed public officials, and to ensure that the public has sufficient access to the information that may be relevant to them or to their property. Secondly, there doesn't seem to be a policy reason which would justify or warrant such an action to be taken in that it is a public setting, anyone has the right to record purely under the law, and, and anyone who wanted to attend could physically attend and observe what was happening at that board meeting. So there wouldn't appear to be a justifiable policy reason for insisting that the recording cease. The next piece of information is regarding keys to the building, and specifically keys to the Conservation Office. So since the meeting, Ms. Hill acquired a key to the Conservation Office. This was reported to one of the members of the Board of Selectmen who advised, who was advised of this by another employee who felt concerned because their maintaining security is critical to important safety, to securing files, etc. Mr. Sexton actually spoke to the staff person who had provided the key. The key was not returned, and in fact, the response was simply, "You'll get your key when I get my staff," which is sort of threatening and intimidating behavior. The next piece of concerning information was certain unilateral action that has been taken by Ms. Hill without the approval of the entire Conservation Commission, or a majority of the Conservation Commission. That has been, examples of those are minutes being posted, were not approved, decisions being discussed with applicants when the commission hadn't yet voted. So these unilateral actions taken by a single member is not consistent with working with the public body. The final piece of information that we'd like to elicit some evidence this evening regards the West Cr- Wesco?
Wesco.
Wes Crum.
Crum.
Crum, yes.
Application that was before the Conservation Commission. And while admittedly this occurred prior to the hearing, it's evidence of a, of a pattern of intimidation against other Conservation Commission members. So specifically, where there has been fairly consistent application of the 35-foot buffer, there's been a court case which stands for the proposition that the 35-foot buffer is a requirement in the town of Townsend. The fact that Ms. Hill approached many of the members of the Conservation Commission in their homes to execute a document which effectively denied the application and denied the leave, with the comment that they should be prepared to face personal liability or court action, shows a pattern of intimidation and bullying of these members, and these members certainly felt bullied and intimidated when she appeared at their doorstep. That is really untenable for the town, and untenable for the town proceeding in a positive way to affect change and positivity. So for those reasons, and once we hear the evidence from the folks who intend to speak this evening, the board is still considering whether or not it wants to remove Ms. Hill from the position of the Conservation Commission.
Well, I would say, before we respond to each one of those, I'd like to hear what the evidence is. I think this is the Selectmen's hearing, so I think that would be appropriate. Obviously, these are, most of them are new to me. I was aware from listening to the cable person what was going on there. Ms. Hill's not a lawyer. I heard him say there was a vote that was taken, that was, I think I heard that, unless I misheard that. So that means that there was a majority that supported. And to the extent that that's not allowed, I mean, I think the Town Council would be advising the commission so that they hold public hearings the way they should be held. I don't think that it's a question of transparency. I know that the commission has discussed this previously. I don't think this is anything new. But again, I think as to whether there's a policy or otherwise, I think that would be up to council to advise the boards whether or not they can say no. As I said, they're, they're not lawyers, so that they, if they hadn't had people recording them previously, they may thought that that was the right thing to do, but it should be done the right way. But as to the others, I, you know, I can, instead of giving fractured responses, I'd rather hear from the individuals that are going to offer testimony, and then, and then we can respond.
I, I just, you know, I stated that I was confronted, persons in the room, if you would like to speak that, that would be fine. If they don't, it's the facts, and then we'll go from there. But I was confronted that after that meeting, when we left this room downstairs that night, that Ms. Hill talked to the commissioners and made it very clear that she was staying on strictly to make Veronica and Chaz's life help. And I just think that's just the wrong thing to do. We just don't undermine that kind of authority. We may disagree sometimes, I get that. We all have the right to disagree. But with that kind of undermining, we're never going to move forward in the town of Townsend. The town of Townsend's been beat up and drug through the mud for the past five years. We have a new board seated here. We want to do the right things. That's why we gave Ms. Hill 30 days, see what we can do, see where we go. For me, I have a problem with that. I don't know what Chaz is going to stand with that. But for me, show me. As she stated, she got a key. We're in the middle, and everybody's known, we've been in the middle of a problem with the security of this building. So we made it very clear that we didn't want keys and stuff, you know, going around, and we got all, everything done. Ms. Hill in return got a key. I do believe that, you know, the key was asked to come back, and as council stated, she said, "When she gets help, she'll give the key back." That, to me, I have a problem. As a person, all the respect in the world. But to undermine that kind of authority, I don't accept it. I don't know what anyone else thinks about it, but for me, that doesn't go well with me.
Well, I'm a parent, I'm a grandparent, I'm a lawyer, and I will tell you, there's two sides to every discussion. And for somebody to come to you and offer, offer that testimony doesn't say to me that that's a fact. They, it's a fact that they said it to you, but that doesn't mean a fact that Karen said it to somebody else. And I, you know, I believe that everybody deserves a benefit and an opportunity to hear what was said and be able to explain what was said. The key issue may be my fault, because I understood that the key was being used to get in so that you could get mail and documents. And I said, "Well, you want to make sure that when the agent is there, that you give it back." Karen works odd hours, so she doesn't come in during normal working hours. So I think that it was just a purpose of access. So now, I indicated to her that she should give that back when it was appropriate. And so that, that, that may be on me. I didn't realize that there was some overarching issue in terms of access to the building. My understanding was that what's happened since the issues that Karen has had is that the, the passcode's been changed on the phone, so she couldn't, she wasn't able to get any messages that were left for the commission. There was mail that was left for the commission that was gone when she got there. So I think that there are a lot of things that are going on. I think that the only reason for the key was to make sure that she could continue doing the business. And I think that once she's, you know, she stepped down as chair, which I thought was probably after our last meeting, that was probably the best thing to do, because it allows for an orderly transition. Is that a beep or something?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. So, there are lots of, you know, there are lots of tributes to Karen from people that have served with her, people that don't have a stake in it, agents who have left, clerks who have left, and they attest to the value that she brings to this commission. She can bring that as a member. Once she's not chairman, we don't have these issues in terms of, you know, what's been raised today. And, and so I don't think that there's really a reason to proceed to remove her, because I think she provides value to the commission. And she's not, she's not the chairman any longer. She has stepped down for those purposes. So, again, I understand people have knocked on your door, people have knocked on our door and said, the people have said very nasty things coming from you and from other members of the Selectmen.
I'll interrupt you on that. Because if there's a nasty word that I've said, I want to disagree with you. I've never said a nasty word about her.
But I will tell you that people, other people have said that you have said nasty words, so.
Well, I can say everyone says nasty words about everyone else too. I'm not going down that road.
Well, that's why I'm making, yeah, you're, that's making.
This is just, we're on facts tonight, okay? As far as I'm concerned, 30 days ago and more, we sat, we all agreed, we're going to move forward, we're going to do it in the best interest. For me, for what we have just read into the facts and what I have heard, unacceptable. I don't, we can sit here and we can argue this all night long. That's unacceptable. You don't undermine the authority. This is a community, this is a customer-oriented, we're here to support the community. We're not here to fight amongst ourselves, and that's exactly what's happening, and that's going to stop.
Yeah, and I agree with you, and I thought that we put that behind, and I, I don't believe.
I did too.
I don't, I don't believe that she's done anything to undermine what's going on with the commission. She's, she set up the hearings, just as you asked, had a hearing, appointed a vice chair, so that the vice chair could become the chair, and stepped down. So I think that she has made sure that there's an orderly transition that's taking place. In, in terms of, we just, we talked about the right to record, that's, that's, that's not on her. She's the chairman. She's one of seven members. There were four, at least four, or maybe three, whatever, the majority voted not to have that recorded, so that's not.
And, and I respect that, sir. But unfortunately, and I watched the 15 minutes probably prior to that, and it was well-made that we have made, took a vote back in 17, we don't want our likes on TV. Well, sir, you know, you're an attorney. Once you become a public official, your likes in a public meeting are not protected.
Right, but I'm an attorney, and I know the answer. So if somebody calls me up and asks me that question, I will advise them. But Karen's not an attorney, and if you say that this happened back in 2017, that means for at least, is that four years, that these haven't been recorded? And now it's coming up at this stage? I mean, I, I think that that says.
It's coming up, sir, because, it's coming up, sir, because the right thing hasn't been done. Okay, so now we're going to do the right thing. I took a note to this community and to the citizens of this town that I'm going to do the right thing. I don't know where Chaz stands, but I know where I stand. As a 49-year business owner of the community, we need to move forward. And what's going on is not going to move forward.
Mr. Shane, I have a question for you.
Go ahead now.
Are all goings-on in the town, the Board of Health, the Finance Committee, are all those meetings recorded as well? And if not, why aren't they, and why isn't the same rule applied to them?
They will be from now on. Close the door. Door, I can answer that door.
I didn't ask you.
And don't, don't be rude about it.
I didn't ask her, I asked you.
Well, you give me a minute. So Steve, you're T-CAM, can you help me on that one?
Yeah, so the president of T-CAM, so there was a meeting sent out in April to the Town Clerk and distributed via all the boards and committees stating the open meeting law and what was required for, to be recorded, where obviously COVID, everything went on to, everything went on to Zoom as of late tonight. So, T-CAM, we had just taken over in Genewar, and as we ramp up and as we get more help on, we are now covering more and more, more and more meetings. So we cover the selection, where you go into contact, we're going to go to, to the Board of Health, where if you notice, we have recorded the being concerts. So, as, as a government, government channel, we can record any meeting we want and broadcast it in the open meeting log with a memo distributed April 30th to all the boards, Chair of all the boards, who are the, through the clerk stated that, you know, this is how it needs to go, has, has been. I've actually had an email with Ms. Hill through our scheduler, you know, with our vice president, that the Zoom, which is owned by T-CAM, Zoom account, was not going to be used. It was going to be through her own. So again, I, we can go record the meetings, we have every right to, but again, we were, we were trying to shut down. But to your point, we can record any meeting, and we are going to as part of transparency, government access. As we get more students from high school coming on with cameras, Dave, our executive director, has been cheering that and getting that all going. We'll see sporting events in the future, so most meetings will be comfortable.
Mr. Clare, I'm going to answer to your question. You're right, they haven't been done. They haven't been done properly. There's been no transparency in this community for a lot of years. Myself, I've been speaking, I've spoke many times in public meetings. We need to fix the wrongs. This is how we start. But by starting and being deliberately against it, it doesn't work for me.
Don't you think people need to be notified? Don't you think that we, we need to be made aware that this is now the protocol for the meetings?
There was. Please address the chair, do not.
Sorry.
Do that. Chaz, I'm going to just let Chaz speak for a minute, please.
I understand it hasn't been a policy, and we have, our, in future meetings, we will be putting out a Selectmen's policy for this. I do understand that, but I've been on several boards for, for several years in this town. And if there is an issue like this, it is probably more appropriate to address the liaison to your, your board or committee or commission to ask the question so that they in turn can either answer you or bring it to the Board of Selectmen to answer. It, it's not really, I don't think it's something that we need to argue in the Selectmen's meeting, to be quite honest.
I'm not arguing, I just.
But, but, but here, here's the thing. Again, through you, Mr. Chair, you know, this is the kind of thing that we need to end in town, the arguing, the, the, you know, if, if there are issues, this board is willing to talk about any issue. We, we are more than glad to talk about whatever needs to be. But there is a protocol and a chain of command that needs to follow. And that's the reason why I, I have an issue with the way this is being presented. If the, if, if the commission or any board or committee has a question in regards to policy, especially if it's a Selectmen's policy, then you need to bring it to the people instead of making your own decision. And my issue with it is that when a decision made, you know, without following the chain of command.
Once again, but if the chain of command had not been, had not been made aware to anybody, I did not know, and I'm on the commission, and I did not know that.
Well, as, as.
Anyone never told me.
As, as a clerk, you're a clerk, or you were a clerk at the time, then you would bring it to the, the, the chair, and the chair then As a clerk, you were a clerk at the time, then you would bring it to the chair, and the chair then in turn would bring it to the liaison. That's typically what the chain of command is.
Wasn't it refreshing you had a liaison?
All right.
The point being is that this has happened since two thousand seventeen. If there was a selectmen's policy, then the selectmen's policy should have been given to the Conservation Commission, and I'm not hearing that the.
There is no policy right now, I'm saying that we discussed it. However, there was, I want to say April thirtieth, I think it was. I can't remember when the memo was sent out by the town clerk, and it was sent to every chair of every board and committee stating that TCM would be available to be able to report so that we can put it on YouTube as part of our PEG access.
But it wasn't a direction from the selectmen stating that all the boards had to allow as a matter of protocol. Again, I think this.
I understand what you're saying, but here, I don't think it can be fixed, okay? There has been direct anger towards the Board of Selectmen by members of the commission. I have asked Ms. Hill on several occasions for something, and instead of getting a common answer, I'm getting quite angry language back at me. There was an email that she said in regards to her job. I can tell you that I have been here in Town Hall, and I've seen her at Town Hall within Town Hall hours on several occasions. So with her time in her job, that she can't come in and she needs a key, then why are we seeing her as often as she can? She also came and attended a department head meeting saying that she was a department head, which she is not. You know, and she had to be asked to leave that meeting. These are the kinds of things that, you know, I just not going to tolerate anymore. All right, it's just not appropriate.
I think it's important to take these things one by one. So why don't we start with presenting the email on the trees and describe what was said in that email to you directly, Chaz, because you're actually the witness and Joe makes his own of what you're aware of.
Okay, so first, there were a couple of people that had a question. I'd like to at least answer the questions, then make it, point to the chair, not back and forth anyone. They see you first.
When you get elected to a board, isn't there like an open meeting law that you have to do, learn? And when you're appointed, that would go over that as well?
Mr. Roy?
At the beginning of the last Conservation Commission meeting, when Hartley was ejected, I stated very clearly that I had a long conversation with Mr. Pumioli that TCM is considered like the press, and they have the right to be anywhere, just like the press.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that conservation meetings have been recorded, audio recorded for years. And if you wanted to hear an audio recording, you would put in a request to the town clerk. So there have been recordings for many years. This is really not anything.
Mr. King?
Yes, I'd like to speak, speaking as a member of the public and experienced board member and knowing very well about open meeting law complaints, which just sounds like a complaint, that should be going through its normal, normal process. And even after the April thirtieth letter, I have, as many of you know, I've attended a lot of meetings, both on Zoom, in person, on the phone calls, and what have you. I've paid a lot of attention to many of the meetings from many of the boards and commissions in this town and committees that you want to call them. A lot of confusion about what's required, what options they have, do they have to do Zoom, do they not have to do Zoom? I've attended meetings of boards who have said they're not going to put their record, they're not going to record the meeting, and they're not going to put it on Channel Nine, they're not going to put it on YouTube, they're not going to do that. If you didn't want to vote in our meeting, they're not going to vote in our meeting. I mean, and that's not conservation. And I'm not trying to target anyone else. My only point here, Joe, and to the board, is to end Karen and Tom Council, is that as a public attending all these boards, I can see that there's a lot of confusion, particularly with the COVID rules changing, and I know the open meeting law is what it is. But it's, and I support that, I support the open meeting law, it's very important. But the confusion about it, to me, I would say that TCM is correct. But I just want to say that there's been a lot of confusion on the board, and to give Karen, give the Conservation Commission the benefit of the doubt internally amongst ourselves, that, okay, they get it now, that the rules on open meeting law apply in this manner, and the Treasury General has put out a number of updates on what, how to deal with Zoom and the COVID rule. So I just, I just see that all the boards should get some kind of tax, that, okay, we need to be reminded. And that's the only one, that's just a comment I want to say.
I'll read to you. You were a selectman for three years, this was under your watch prior to me. This should have been solved while your board was sitting there, not while there's a new board. I'm not here to take.
Don't you dare attack my board for the actions that you are taking against.
Okay.
The citizens of this town.
Listen.
I have nothing to do with any of the boards.
Ms. King, I'm going to ask you to not act out like that. I stated a fact. I stated a fact, and that's how we're going to move forward. If you have another outburst like that, I'm going to ask you to leave the meeting.
Let's focus, this is about me, thank you.
All right, go ahead. Chaz, I'll give you the floor.
According to what I understand, I was approached by an employee and asked about the key for the conservation, or actually for the land use office. Ms. Hill has a key fob to get into the building, which will allow access to the mailboxes and that sort of stuff. But the land use office is a combination office of conservation, planning, zoning, that kind of stuff. It would also do GIS and that sort of stuff in that particular office. That office, it would not, it would not be appropriate to leave that office unlocked for somebody to go in there after hours. And that's what Ms. Hill had asked the administrator in that office to do. That administrator contacted me and said that she was asked to leave the office open, and I said, well, this is your office, this is where you work. Do you feel comfortable doing that? She said, no. I said, then you need to do what you need to do. And the office was apparently locked. And that employee came back in the following day, there was, there's two doors to that particular office. One of the doors was unlocked and open to the public, and she had great concern with that, and she voiced her concern to me. Part of what Selectman Shank had talked about is that part of my job and what I've been tasked to by this board is to look into security issues, not only with our IT, building security, and the keys and all of that fall into my purview. So I went down to the facilities who looked. He tells me that he had been approached by Ms. Hill and asked for a key, and he gave her a key to the land use office. When I found out this information, I then informed the employee that, you know, there is a key out for this particular office, and they were not comfortable with having someone who is not employed have a key. So I asked the facilities gentleman to ask for the key back from Ms. Hill, which he did. And the reply that we got was from Ms. Hill on July sixteenth. It says, "Thank you for the letter regarding providing keys to town employees, because I have been trying to be as communicative as possible, holding up to my end of the bargain that we had in our last hearing. As you are aware, I've been performing the work of the administrative assistant and the agent for a while. There are no town employees working on a conservation permission. This work requires access to the office. I have a full-time job, and my access to the office is typically when Town Hall is closed. I will return the key immediately when the office is staffed and functioning with town employees, which appears to be later this month. That will allow the paper work to process, which is in the best interest of all. No paperwork or files will be removed from the office, respectfully, Ms. Hill." That's what I had received back from her. My concern, and it's been a concern of the board, for files being missing and all of that kind of stuff. I don't know what's in that office, you know, I'm following protocol, but, you know, not allowing us to have the key back, I think, without sending, you know, this kind of email to me, I think, is, you know. I'm not happy with that.
I think that was a very courteous response. I mean, it certainly was.
I want the key back. I didn't want a response telling her that, telling me that she's not getting the key back.
Will she explain? I mean, one of the problems that we have here is because.
No, I'm going to cut you off. I'm going to cut you off. Here's the thing, all right? The reason why we're here is we allowed her thirty days to prove to us what we said was, we wanted to be open with communication, we wanted to be able to follow, you know, the rules and regulations or what we're doing. And this is one small example of how, you know, she's not.
Call up, mute, please.
Not following what we were asking.
Can I interject here? I was given a key in February. I've had a key since February, and somehow I misplaced the key. It fell off, it's a key. So I was looking for a replacement key. That's what I was looking for, was a replacement key.
Which is even more disturbing.
It's somewhere here in Town Hall.
We don't know that's a fact though, do we? So we have a key missing. This is the first I'm hearing of that. So that is all I mean to me.
I told that to Rob, so I'm sorry.
Okay, but.
If I could, the real issue here is it was a direct request by the entity that has care custody control to return the key. And the response may have been, but it was a refusal.
One second, please. Whoever is not muted, would you please mute?
I think there's.
Yeah, there's a way to mute it.
Yeah, I don't know that.
Can you speak up a little, please? You're a little muffled, but I'd like to hear what you're saying, please.
Sure. I can't remember exactly what I've said, but I'll try to start again.
You said it was polite, but it was a refusal.
So there was a direct request by the entity that has care custody control of the building to return the key. And it may have been a polite refusal, but in fact, it was a refusal. It wasn't a request to reconsider, here's new information, I'd like me to think about it. It was a refusal to comply with a direct request by the board following a discussion at the last hearing that they would collaborate. So the tone is sort of irrelevant when you look at the context of the response, which was to refuse a direct request.
Yeah, I guess I didn't look at it as a refusal. I mean, we, one of the reasons that we're here is because the selectmen say that she hasn't upheld her tasks as a volunteer commission member to be agent and clerk, which means that she has to go in, has to answer the phones, has to collect the mail, she has a full-time job. She may come into work, you're right, sometimes during the day when she can. But otherwise, she comes in on a weekend or after hours, and so she needed access. And she wasn't refusing, she was stating, you asked, what I heard for the thirty days is you were looking for her to show responsibility, that she was going to perform the actions of the commission, which included being clerk and agent during that time period until they're filled.
Working with their other institutions.
And that was, and so she did acknowledge that, that the reason that she is going in is just for that purpose. And as soon as the agent's there, then she doesn't need a, she doesn't need a key. So she was actually, my view, and that's why I say there's two sides. When you look at anything, being a parent, we hear it, right? And her view is that she was trying to be helpful. So if she can't access the building except when people are there, and she's not there, then she's not getting the work done. And then she gets in trouble because she's not performing her duty.
And I understand that too, but I also know that there are two other commissioners that have approached me that said that they have volunteered their time and their effort within the business hours of the Town Hall and have been more than willing to do whatever needed to, you know, whatever is needed for the commission, and they have never been asked for help. That's news to me.
Well, that's great. I mean, I don't know if they said it to you, but I'm not aware that they said it to Ms. Hill. So I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Who were they?
Do you notice before we speak?
Your back was turned up, sorry.
Sorry. I'm just reading somewhere, is that my backdrop?
Well, if that individual that had provided me that information is willing to speak, then go ahead.
That individual would be definitely eaten. And I did offer my time when I received word that the chair had sent a letter that I did not approve, saying that you weren't doing any work when I was more than willing to do the work. I volunteered my time.
Nobody notified me.
Yeah, I'm not sure who that was provided to, that's, because I, you know, Karen's been looking for somebody. Thankfully, somebody has stepped up to do the work, but she's been looking for help for a long time.
And we have been trying to find help for a long time. We've been in the interviewing process, we've got different things going. But I think, as I said last time, we can't go out on Main Street and grab somebody, tell them, we need them to come work. Townsend's not unique to this problem. It's throughout the entire country. It's very difficult to find help. And as you well know, we've been without a town administrator, but we have to step up to the plate, we have to do it. I'm not complaining, it's a lot of work, absolutely, more than I ever even dreamed it could be, okay? But it's the job I took, it's the position I have, the job has to be done. I can't sit here and cry, I don't have a TA, I'm all upset, I'm overloaded. Yeah, we all are. That's the nature of what's going on in the country. One second, go ahead.
I've been on the Conservation Commission in the past, when there were two commissioners, myself and another person, possibly three, and we did everything. I do believe that in the Wetlands Protection Act, although the legal requirements for me, excuse me, a conservation commissioner, you are required to do the work. It does not say you're required to be on the board and have an administrator and an aide, you are required to be required to do the work. When Ms. Hill sent a letter saying that she was not going, the commission was not going to be doing the work of the Conservation Commission without a vote of the board, without even informing every member of the Conservation Commission.
Miss Pettit, and I know where you're going with that, but at the beginning of this, I stated that I just, that letter was prior to the thirty days, so I really don't want to muddy the water. We've all heard it, we've all seen it, we know about it. This is from the day we sat in that meeting to the day we were sitting here today. So.
Mr. Shank, through you. I wanted to be very clear is that I'm not, this is not a personal attack as far as I'm concerned. I have no, I really have no sword in the fight or whatever the terminology is on that, right? My bottom line to all of this is the unprofessional behavior that I've encountered. And the unprofessional behavior is refusal to get a key when the executive board of the town asks for it. That getting a letter saying that they're not going to do any work, telling the Board of Selectmen, who is the executive board, that, you know, we're going to do whatever we want to do. The evidence that I have is that we're asking you to do something, we're willing to do it. And I had said that in the last time, thirty days ago, and not once did Ms. Hill pick up the phone and call. Not once did she send me an email saying, I need help with this. Can you, would you be able to open that Town Hall on Saturday between this time and this time? I would have been more than glad to do that, but I never got it. We have to be collaborative, and I said that before. And that's all I'm asking. And that had not, none of that has shown to me in the last thirty days. That's where my decision is based.
Remember, communication runs both ways. So when you got that letter from Ms. Hill, who indicated that she knows that there's no town administrator, so that you guys are overwhelmed with the work that you have. She's not looking to give you the constant pub work, but if you received that letter and said, oh, we've got a misunderstanding here, you could have picked up the phone and said, hey Karen, if you need to come in, you call me anytime, and I'll get you a key to come in there. So the communication, remember, it's not just one way, it's going to be two ways. And I think the point of her letter was that she was opening, it wasn't as was characterized earlier. Yeah, we'll see when the agent comes. There were five paragraphs in there that explained exactly why, and I think was inviting a response.
Again, it was a refusal from, we had asked for a request from the Board of Selectmen. It was a refusal from, we had asked for a request from the board of selectmen. I understand what you're saying.
She said that she would give it back as soon as the agent.
I'm sorry?
Did you give me a key to the land use office?
The key, Rob has it.
Okay, but did you give a key when, when, when Rob asked you to?
She gave a key when she's no longer chair, because she no longer has that response.
She did not give the key when I had asked, sorry.
What's the date of that?
That's, that's what it was. When did, and the, the.
I thought you said your last sixteenth.
Sixteenth is whatever I read.
Okay, so you, you gave the key when you stopped being chair.
Right, which is when?
Exactly.
Twenty eighth.
Which is exactly what she indicated that she was, this was, this, this was no insubordination.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. That's how I view it. Alright? And you said two sides to every story. This is my side. It is insubordination because I have other evidence, emails on that, you know, she's going to run the, the conservation commission the way she wants to. She runs her own program and that's what I see. Okay? That's what I see.
Well, I, I think we should, that should be evidence here, because if, if that's the case, I mean, you, you handed me one letter. This sounds by a concern. Townsend, I, nobody, they don't even have a name on here. But that's not a fact then. I mean, that's an opinion or.
But if we want to pick that apart, we could pick certain pieces apart out of that, but we don't have to go down that.
Right.
I just wanted to give you as transparency as to what I received.
I agree.
Maybe I should have just hid that from you.
No, no, I.
So, you know, let's, let's call a spade a spade here. You know, you want facts, that's facts. That was mailed to me. So I feel my obligation as a select person of this town, if we're going to be sitting in a hearing, to present the evidence and all the evidence. That's what I got given.
But it's, it's not a fact that this happened. It's a fact that this, this was mailed to you. That's the only fact. What, what's in here is a fact.
There's facts, factual pieces in there if we want to go down it.
I would love to. Prove this one. I'm sorry.
Prove which one, Miss Hill? The very bottom one?
Yeah.
I don't, I, I'm not, I'm not talking about any of this. I gave this as facts, as far as just as evidence that I got. I'm not here saying, Ms. Hill.
It was a courtesy to give.
So pure courtesy. That's all I did.
Well, don't, don't call it a fact.
There are some in this that are. Do you want to read it and tell me if there's nothing in there factual?
For, for instance.
So we can go that way, Ms. Hill, if you'd like to. If there's, everything in there is unfactual, please tell me that.
When, when we're here at the last hearing, you provided me with complaints with respect to signatures by Board of Health, Science of the Building Department and others. I presented to you tonight, facts. I presented to you exhibits where things were signed by Ms. Hill. And so there was no delay in work going forward. That's factual. That's, there's a signature on a form that you indicated to us was, that she wasn't participating in. This, this is, this is hearsay. This is signature, this is allegations by somebody who doesn't even put their name on.
No, I think it makes sense to go allegation by allegation. And if you have more witness relative to.
I, I don't know. I, I stated it. If anybody wants to state anything in regards to what I said, you're more than welcome to speak. If you don't want to, then that will be a done deal. Over. Hang on.
I just wanted to mention that I did have an email sent to all three boards of selectmen dated June ninth, offering my time. And Ms. Hill was CC'd on that.
Okay, thank you. Steve?
Just, um, about the open meeting law and about T-Cam recording. This is an email dated May first, I do receive from Ms. Hill. So she did acknowledge that our letter of the sixteenth, but stating she didn't receive. This is good morning, Lisa, Stephen, Dave, thank you. Stephen, Lisa, we're sending you the T-Cam policy. I noticed that it was dated April sixteenth. And it was addressed to all boards and committees. Yet this is the first time I am seeing this to accept or send. And how is it made available for the committee? So it was, you know, Ms. Hill did see it then on the first, might not have seen it on the sixteenth. I couldn't speak for that. We went to the clerk. But on the sixteen, on the first of May, it was, you know, that we would be recording.
Thank you.
No, actually, that stated that you are going to, after recording, immediately download everything on YouTube.
Right, it was part of that overall memo. So from recording to uploading on, on YouTube, which is the Towns Public Access, another form of the Towns Public Access. We, at that time, we're now posting things on YouTube and running them on.
And you also wrote, that was your interpretation of the open meeting law?
It's not the interpretation, it's the direction.
That's how you wrote it.
Was it interpretation? It was what we, what we were advised by our council of open meeting and discussing with the state on the open meeting law. Because we had to get guidance when COVID happened and how we conduct Zoom meetings. So through our attorney and the state, we were able to get guidance. And that's where, how the memo came up.
Do you refer to the state as the Attorney General's office?
I, we, when our attorney went through the open, we went through.
Do you consider the Attorney General's office?
Yeah. Please address the board, just the chair, and then I'll.
You heard what I just said. Send the question over to him. Did he get the information through the Attorney General's office?
Secretary of State.
See, and the point is being made by somebody who is alert that the, the Attorney General is the one that enforces the open meeting law, not the Secretary of State.
And you have the, you have, you have the opinion of this, the Attorney General that sent back a request that I sent. And that is the opinion of the Attorney General about that.
As of, as of today, and I think, I think.
Hey, please, please don't do that. You can't get this meeting out of control.
I would just say, I would agree that one thing that's come out tonight is that there will be a policy from the selectmen directing all of the boards, not just the COMCOM or the board, but all of the boards, how they should allow the cable telecast to take place. But that, but that wasn't clear before.
And I was just upholding what my commission had always wanted to do. I.
She's one of seven.
And, and.
It's always been my, my one goal is to best interest of my commission.
What I want to do, because this meeting, we've got a lot of business. We have executive sessions that we have to get into tonight that are very important also, that we have on the timeframe.
I understand, we have until seven o'clock. Is that correct? Or to your agenda, your next item is scheduled for seven o'clock?
We have a joint meeting at seven.
We have a joint meeting at seven, yes. We suppose that is six fifteen executive, but we can't.
Don't go down Kate's list. There, there were five items. First, we talked about this bullying that took place. And so we're, we've, I'd like to hear that the evidence of the bullying that took place with respect to Ms. Hill allegedly speaking to conservation commission members after this, after our last meeting.
Okay, is there anyone in this room that Ms. Hill went to their home otherwise, or tried to bully, or anything that would like to speak? Go ahead.
Yes, she came to my home and told me that I should be prepared to be served with a lawsuit.
Okay, and what was it for?
It was for my, my vote to deny a waiver of the thirty-five foot bylaw to the West Con.
Okay, alright.
May I respond? I went to her house to get the signatures that were needed for the denial. And she happily signed away. And I told her, be prepared for a lawsuit, because someday, two or three months down the road, it's going to be summertime, you're going to be out in your yard goofing around, someone's going to show up and say, hey, are you well, so and so? And, and I did not. It was, it was never allowed. It was just an informative thing. This will happen.
So, and, and for what I know of some of this going on, because first of all, I want to make it very clear, I am not here to micromanage any department, not here to micromanage fireplace, conservation plan board, nobody. But if something comes to my attention, or I see something, I kind of pay attention. I will say that West Con whole situation as far as what I seen and followed that process. I've been in front of the conservation commission, and there's people in here that have been involved. I have never in my life, in the past, and I've been building homes in this community for fifteen years, ever see a COMCOM decision at the same night, go around, get signatures to try to get it out in the mail the next day.
It wasn't same night.
But within a day or two, it doesn't matter. That's absolutely unheard of. But that's, that's okay. I don't want to discuss that.
Wait a minute, that's not true. That's not true.
How, how, how late was it after, excuse me? How, how many days after the fact about signing that?
It was less than forty-eight hours. It was the morning of, our meeting was Wednesday night, and she came first on Friday morning, I forget.
It was probably closer to noon time.
Alright, that's okay. But just, but my point, I'm trying to make, that's just unprecedented in the Town of Townsend.
No, it's not.
And there's enough people that sit here that have, oh, absolutely.
Well, wait, you know, I, I do this for a living.
Yeah.
There's a statute that says that the action has to be within twenty-one days. And if it's not within twenty-one days, you lose jurisdiction. So, does this happen? I got to tell you, it happens more often than not that, that they're always scrambling to get the signatures so they meet the twenty-one days. Because if you have a bylaw that protects a thirty-five foot area and you don't issue your decision on time, guess what? That goes out the, goes out the window. So there is, so there, I will just say, of the commissions I deal with all over the state, that's, that happens all the time.
Okay, one second, please.
If I could, uh, so there was no real urgency forty-eight hours after the meeting.
I don't know what the twenty-one days was.
So, so forty-eight hours is, is less than.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interject here. I got confused.
So, so let me just finish.
Let Council finish, please.
So there was no real urgency. The member of the commission felt intimidated. There is another member of the commission who felt intimidated when you arrived at their houses. There wasn't just an email that was sent out, if the decision's waiting at Town Hall, and you need to sign it by X date in order to effectuate the decision, which is, my experience, a little more commonplace. Written the decision, it's there for your signature, come at your leisure, but within these, this time.
Except we were in COVID and Town Hall was in lockdown. And so.
And the members felt that there was a tactic whereby you didn't let them read the decision before they signed it. That the comment about being prepared for a lawsuit felt intimidating. That there was no reason to make that comment since the past decisions have been fairly consistent in enforcing the thirty-five foot buffer. And there's case law, pure court case, which supports the fact that the thirty-five foot buffer exists. So the comment was sort of gratuitous at the, the most, you know, in the light most favorable to you, it was gratuitous. In the light less favorable, it was intimidating. And for that reason, many of the members complained, or two of the members complained to the board.
Well, you know, it's twenty-one days after the close of the hearing. It's not twenty-one days after the, after, whenever they write the decision.
Right.
And that's when you run into.
It was forty-eight hours after the close of the, the hearing.
So the hearing was closed and decision was issued immediately? Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Because I got confused. I, I thought I had ten days to get it out, which is after twenty-one days. But I got confused. I knew I had a very busy schedule coming up. I had a small window when I could get all this done. So I sent everybody text message individually and said, hey, are you around for signatures? And I went to their houses. And that's how I've been doing it for the past four months. I've been going to everybody's houses to get signatures on RDAs and notices of intent and whatever it is. I've been running to everybody's houses instead of them coming to me.
Go ahead.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say that I'm available to come to Town Hall at any time because I live across the street. Other than that, minute forty-three of the March twenty-fourth meeting, this was on the heels of Ms. Hill saying to the representative from West Co., okay, sorry, Paul, this was after the vote. I'll get that paper to you work as soon as I can. Maybe tomorrow. Maybe tomorrow.
Joe, I think Leslie added a hand up. I thought it was a good point coming from her about signatures.
Leslie, you have a comment?
It was a point, you do have twenty-one days, plenty of time, and that also helps you craft thoughtful decision when you're denying.
Exactly.
We've never.
Mr. Ryan?
You know, I'm watching a lot here, and I'm just trying to keep my tongue and my wits about myself. They were two young members that, yes, when they are confronted with the language that Karen presented to them, they can demonstrate a, a degree of intimidation. I get it. Maybe better care should have been put forward. How long is this going to go around and round here?
Not going to go much longer.
Point of semantics, okay?
I was just hoping that somebody would speak up for me, but that's okay.
Need to make a decision if it's insubordination, if it's this, this, or that. We are, we're groveling about a woman that's put in as a volunteer. We've got lawyers here, on it, on it goes. Somebody's got to make a decision. This fall, the rule needs to just stop right now. Okay? If it comes down to Karen's stand, I'm fine with leaving the commission. Something's got to change. The mentality of the board has not been healthy. We are in a big debate about it being recorded. We, it hasn't been recorded since two thousand seventeen. Okay? If it was necessary for us to record it, I would have taken the time when I asked for you to get the information from the Attorney General. Moving on, we understand the problem. The key, we understand the problem. Make a decision. Someone's got to either stay or go.
Let me ask you straight out.
Sure, Joe.
Sure. So if we keep her on, you're, you're leaving.
I'm leaving the meeting right now. It's like, this has just gotten ridiculous.
So that just tells us something. That just tells me something.
She has come to town on this board. It's perpetuated. I've seen it. I'm as responsible and aware of it as anybody. But it's got to stop. It's got to end right now.
And that's what I'm trying.
Legal here, her lawyer, this, that, this is sewers falling. Let's smite enough and act like a town. Karen, do you really want to stay on as a commissioner and draw this attention? Because that's the only thing that's going to keep coming from it. You can have my resignation. This is ridiculous. This is the first thing I've ever seen. I should put my house up for sale, because this is how the town functions. It's going to keep rolling like this.
No, it isn't, Mr. Ryan. I think we're going to make a decision. We're going to make a decision.
Because it's been going on for years, and everybody's been teed up about it.
Thank you. That helps. That helps. Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm going to say something in defense of Karen.
Okay, go ahead.
She is the best, the most qualified, the most educated person there is on this conservation commission. If you replace her or remove her from the commission, you are doing the residents of the Town of Townsend a major disservice. Because nobody, not one commissioner is going to put into it what Ms. Hill has put into it for all these years.
I'm just going to hold my tongue for a minute. Um, go ahead, Leslie.
I'm sorry. I'd just like to respectfully disagree. I heard Ms. Hill say you do not have a thirty-five foot overster buffer. I'm going to just show on a plan. That doesn't matter. And she thinks, I heard her say at that meeting that the Weapons Protection Act, same thing as Towns of Month bylaw. And so it won't matter. It'll just go right back to DDP. That's not true. The bylaw always has to be more restrictive than the Weapons Protection Act. Then our bylaw is more restrictive, and it does have different system. I know, not within the last thirty days.
And I'm not trying to, I, I, I don't want to try to cut anybody off. We, we've gone around on this for near one hour right now. I think we need to move forward with what we're doing. I think, Kate, you need to get us in the direction, tell us how we need to do, what we need to do.
Mr. Chairman, may I just.
Go ahead.
Mr. Cameron, I'd like to restate that I've been an electoral official of the Town of Townsend for nineteen years. And in conjunction with that, with my other office and also being appointed to the Conservation Commission, working with the commission previously has been a joy. But since this stuff started with the first woman in there years ago, it has really gone down the tubes. Karen Hill, extremely intelligent, professional woman that did her absolute best to help the Conservation Commission. And I will stand by her all the way to the end. And I will stand by her all the way to the grave. And I really think, you selectmen should consider the good she's done prior to the incident of the past four months where she was putting us to war by individuals that haven't been dead or yet.
I'm not gonna get into any of those discussions, sir.
So, you want me to speak now for a moment?
I, I, I don't, I, I'm not here to get into a discussion about Van Dettas or anything. I'm here to just move forward. Take the community in a positive direction, move forward. That's all I wanna do. That's all I can do. There's other members of the board, they can disagree with me.
I'm here for the people on the other side of the table myself. I've done this since I started. You're a witness to that. And I'm telling you right now, if you're a parent, we're making a difference.
Thank you. I'm gonna just take one more question. Go ahead, Jennifer, just...
Jennifer, I've been on the Conservation Commission in the past for probably approximately twenty years. I've seen a lot that we've gone through in this town. I've seen people that have gotten on the board who disagreed with enforcing the regulations, left the board because they found by law they have to. On April twenty-first, two thousand nine, the commission was taken to court, and I believe it was...
Why, why are we... Yeah, I don't know where, where are you going with that? I, I don't...
And I'm talking about the Bible.
Well, by law, it's not...
Hang on, Joe.
Let me remind people, wetlands are where the water reaches the groundwater. Thirty-five foot, no disturb.
I, I, and Jennifer, I don't, yeah, that's, that, we're not going anywhere with that, and I understand where you're going. I wanna keep this to the facts. I wanna, move forward, Chaz, what do you wanna do? Where in front of us, we've heard all the deliberation, you presented your facts. Counsel, you've stated, make a decision. Like that gentleman just said there, if we don't do something one way or the other, it's gonna self-destruct on itself. And I'm not here to take and see the town self-destruct anymore than we can.
I'm prepared to make a motion, that's what you're looking for.
Kate, have we, have we covered enough?
You have to consider the evidence that you've heard, you've heard the witnesses testify, you have to consider that. You can deliberate to the extent you want to, make a motion, and render a decision. That's as simple as that.
Well, I've presented to you a document tonight, a response to the allegations that were made on June thirtieth, that, that there was inefficiency that was taking place because Ms. Hill wasn't taking care of business as the agent, the clerk, and as the Conservation Commission chair. And I've provided you all of the exhibits to show that that's not the case. Those are, those are facts. It's not innuendo or hearsay. Those are actual signed documents to show that work took place, emails to show that she was performing her work. You've, you've heard that she may be controversial, but, but nobody has said that she doesn't know the Wetlands Act better than anybody else on the commission, so that she's a positive.
There was a statement made by a commissioner that it's not gonna get any better if we continue. If she stays on, the Conservation Commission is not gonna go forward, it's going to self-destruct. Pretty much so. Did you hear what that gentleman just said?
I did, but I also heard that...
That gentleman has been on the Conservation Commission for many years. His mom...
He's not even certified.
He's not even certified.
It doesn't...
Yes, it does have that respect.
Not even certified.
Doesn't get, just...
I, I think the point being is that there are lots of other people that have a different opinion than he, than he does. And people who are respected, we've provided you, people who are willing to put their names down, not to sign it as a Town Tonight, but you have several letters from agents and from people working for the commission who have stated that she has the credentials and has dedicated her time to doing, to doing this. You, you heard from one person about that, that there was turmoil.
Well, when there is turmoil, we see it. I, 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 I can say, I see it, I hear it.
Yeah.
And, you know, once again...
I, I've served on lots of boards, and, you know, there's term, sometimes turmoil is positive because it means people are thinking. But, but in that, in that, in this...
Turmoil's not good.
Well, it, it depends on what, as long as you come out at the end with a unified action from a board, which is what the commission does when they go, when they look at a project and they analyze what the wetland impacts are, they come to a, they come to a decision. And you have a person that nobody has denied helps you come to those, come to those decisions. So, you know, one of the first cases that we, we read when we started law school was called Margery Madison. It says, we're a government of laws and not of people, which means that we treat everybody the same way. The, the sense, the reason I got involved is the sense that I have here is she's been targeted for being controversial in certain matters. And that, and that's why she's here and there and others aren't, to, to...
I, I, I disagree with you. She's been targeted. She surely hasn't been targeted by me. I, I've known her and I've known her husband for many, many years. I have all the respect in the world. Why I'm sitting here as a select person, I took a note to do the right thing. And for me, when I sat in front of her, shook her hand, said, let's move forward, Karen, do the right thing, let's get this going. But now I'm sitting here thirty days later, later, I'm getting letters, I'm getting complaints of violating the state laws. Chaz is getting direct letters, you know, where, where are we going? We're not going backwards. If I was that person, I would have done a hundred and fifty percent to make sure everybody knew what I was doing, keep it nice and calm across the board. As far as this targeting, I'm not gonna get in the middle of any fight between any people. They're all adults. Grow up and move on.
Yeah, and I, and I agree, and I, and that, and I was actually pardoned by the discussion then, the last meeting, and I think Karen was as well, and she was willing to give up being chair in order to sit on the Conservation Commission so she would take herself out of this, being the, being the target. Because now that there's gonna be a chairman, she doesn't have to worry about that. She can now do what she's good at, which is analyzing projects. And she doesn't have to come into town hall to sign every document because there's no administrative assistant, there's no agent. She doesn't have to go and see the building department because there's no agent, no administrative assistant. She doesn't have to go to the Board of Health because there's no agent and there's no administrative assistant. She can be a commissioner, which is what you need and what the other people are saying you need. You know, she's already taken care of not being the chair. You need her as a member, and I don't think there's anything that indicates that there's any inefficiency, insubordination as a, as a member of this, of this commission. And we've provided you with that evidence.
And that will be your opinion, and we all have the right to our opinions. I just, in my, and I've made this very clear to myself, I have no more time to discuss conservation issues, problems. We have bigger fish in this town to fry. We need to make sure we do the right thing to keep our budget moving, get all our bills paid, and keep our head above water. Not here to micromanage the Conservation Commission, I'm not here for any of that. And I don't see us, no disrespect here, Karen, I don't see us moving forward in any good direction, how we stand now.
Well, you say you're not here to micromanage. You, you can say you're not here to micromanage, but yet you keep appointing people to our commission without our, without us having any input.
So, let me, may I?
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm, I'm done. I'm, I'm done. I, I would like to, to, number one, have a point of order. I asked you if you wanted a motion. I'd like to point out a couple of things. In the letter that the Board of Selectmen sent to Ms. Hill, the reasons are as follows. Several time-sensitive issues that the Conservation Commission must act on, certainly currently per the duties of the appointment, which need immediate attention. We talked about what, what, what those are. The Conservation Commission is not acting on applications. Today, there is a number of applications requiring review, which were, which were corrected. The failure to timely review, review these applications jeopardizes the sensitive wetland areas. That's what we talked about before. Until there is staff in the Conservation Office, so no one will be forming any conservation work, was the reason why we sent this letter. It was a, I took it as very intimidating to the Board of Selectmen, which is much different than, you know, someone else, you know, or hearsay or whatever. That's the kind of stuff that's been happening in this town for a very long time, and I'm not gonna stand for it. Okay?
Yeah.
Number one, per the charter, that we, as an appointing board, have the authority to appoint or unappoint or remove an individual. Therefore, I'm ready to give the motion. Okay?
Right, just before the motion, with respect...
Now, it just...
I'm glad that you did raise those because we answered the questions relative to the timely review on the applications. There are no applications that haven't been heard by the commission. I, that's what I presented to you. Once, once counsel submitted those, we were able to show you that all of those hearings have gone forward, all those sign-offs took place.
And my...
And they were, they took place...
My point is that she presented that the board, the commission, was not gonna do any work until we appointed staff, which is, which I find very intimidating to an executive board. And that is, you know, there is some history behind that. So therefore, I make a motion that we remove Karen Hill from the Conservation Commission without reappointment.
I'll second that. What else we have to do with that?
So, you have to call for a vote.
Oh, now you're gonna, roll call, hope.
Just Sexton, Greenian, yes.
Joe Shank, yes.
Sorry, so...
Sorry, we gotta move on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Miss, excuse me a second.
In recess for a moment?
Take a, a five-minute recess, we'll go get the chair.
All right.
Yeah, just give all that back to Mr. Dorian, put all that big board back together. He threw it over, he was all... This is all...
That's mine, that's the energy committee.
This is all his.
What's this?
That's his, probably.
We still have live mics.
Yeah, we have live mic.
All right.
So, that's all, Mr. Dorian's.
Okay, can I take my...
Yeah, you can take your computer, we're still live, we took a five-minute break.
All right.
You're on, Madam Chair, I'll just give you an update.
We're gonna start at seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can say, can you mute that?
I, will it work?
He said...
Back on.
All right, back on.
Sorry about that.
I'm looking for the energy committee. Let's wait a few minutes. I think I saw, I was, what's Friday's agenda? So, I thought I saw that Ron and maybe Brett were gonna attend.
I think you should, just go back, go back live.
We could go...
Okay, ready to go back?
Yeah, go ahead.
Give me ten seconds.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go back to three point two and talk about that, or to begin with, to kind of calm down.
Well, for MJTC, wanna do that? Yeah, and, and, and we can do the appointment as well.
Just my face right?
If you'd like.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, partly. All right, we are returning from our break. And we are going to, we have a seven o'clock meeting with the Energy Committee, but we are going to move down to three point two because we have a few minutes here. We need to appoint a member of the Board of Selectmen to the Montiche's of Joint Transportation.
All right.
For FY twenty-two.
All right.
Could you mute if you're not participating in the meeting, please?
I'm here this week because my kids are doing sailing lessons. Yes. My sister has a house...
Could you mute, please? We are hearing every word, or maybe it's, if you're not muted, could you please mute?
That'd be excellent.
Thank you.
Is Arnie muted in there?
I don't know.
All right.
All right, so, I have, I was the planning board member, I think, two years ago for MJTC. I attended last year, but they had, I, I checked with them, and they had Don Klein on the list, even though I was the one attending. So, we need to officially appoint someone, and there's an appointment form which I will fill out tomorrow, we can sign.
So, are you volunteering?
I don't mind, I've been, I've been attending.
I can't do the meeting, I can't do the meetings because I just...
And they're doing two o'clock in the afternoon.
Oh, so that's tough.
So...
So, all right, I...
I'm willing.
A motion?
I move that we appoint Veronica Kell to the Montiche's of Joint Transportation Committee to represent the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Just Sexton, Greenian.
Veronica Kell, yes. Should we go on to three point three at this point?
Probably do that.
All right. So, just very quickly, I'm, I'm looking for someone from the Energy Committee online, and I don't see them yet. So, for three point three, I would like a vote or a motion to appoint as our new interim town administrator, Ross Perry. And Ross, I see you're there. It says, I wrote this before, pending successful contract negotiations with, which we have done. So, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Ross Perry as Town of Townsend's interim town administrator, pending successful contract negotiations, which we have done, and completion of pre-employment requirements.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Just Sexton, Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. So, welcome, Ross. We look forward to you being there, being here tomorrow morning at nine AM.
Congratulations, Ross, really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, I'm looking forward to joining you.
Are you sure about that?
I will withhold comments about the earlier topic tonight. I'm still looking forward to being there tomorrow morning.
Excellent. Ross, your, your office is ready. I will later today text you the code to the door. I have homework waiting for you on your desk. I put things there to get you started, you know, when you get in, so I will do that.
Great. We'll see, we'll see you tomorrow, and thank you for your vote.
Wow, great, great honor to be, have you with us.
And we look forward to having you start tomorrow, so...
I'll be there. I'll be there. Thank you again for your vote. There we go.
Welcome. All right. So at this point, we're going to go back. I see that Ron's on. So two point two, meeting with the Energy Committee to discuss the energy master plan. And the energy master plan and energy aggregation. So Ron, we have the email. Is there anybody else besides you on some energy?
I don't know of anyone else who is. Everyone knows about the meeting. And I was trying to get back for it, but we'll see.
Yeah, I know that he had texted me or not texted, emailed me earlier and said that he may or may not. So I'm glad you could join. So looking at this, I want to talk first about the energy aggregation. I know I attended the presentation back in February. I think it was Freedom who presented then, Freedom Energy Logistics. And in the email that was sent to us, you provided a second vendor and you said you, you hope we will contact these and other brokers to figure out next steps and get quotes. Just hang on one minute. If you are on the meeting and are not muted, could you mute yourself, please? I'm, I'm looking at these two people that are, are not muted and there's, I, it's hard to hear. Thank you. Would you like us then to follow through with these two, Ron?
I cannot quite understand you. So I'm going to try to turn this, I'm going to try to shut something off. I, if I apparently have a button here that says done speaking. So when I, when I push that button, you can't hear me, but I can't see you while that's on. So that's crazy.
That's okay. That's all right. So do you want me to, I'll read the letter that was sent from Brent.
I have that letter in front of me.
Oh, you do have, okay.
Record if you'd like.
I think I will. Dear Board of Selectmen, the Townsend Energy Committee recommends that Townsend engage the below service providers to obtain information about potential savings and advantages to municipal energy aggregation and consider pursuing competitive energy aggregation contract electric rates as an alternative to standard electric rates for all our public buildings. Municipal electric aggregation is also available for town governments to organize on behalf of residential customers. But at this time, we are suggesting that the town look to save money and or anchor the rate part of costs for periods of time that may aid planning. The committee has had exposure to two firms that specialize in commercial, industrial and government property. We hope the town will contact these and other brokers to learn next steps and get quotes. And then it gives the two companies, Freedom Energy Logistics and Constellation Energy. So I know that I attended the the presentation when Freedom presented to to the Energy Committee back in February. And the, we have the presentation here. And so what I think I'd like to do is put this on a further meeting for us and perhaps have a vote that we will go out and get quotes and talk to these two companies. The Board of Selectmen will do that. So are we good with that? Ron?
Good with that.
And Ron, do you think that will? Is, is that what the Energy Committee is looking for? I guess.
Yes, the idea, I would try to emphasize that, that this is, this is what we're looking for is for the town to look at getting this aggregation thing examined for this, for the town buildings only. There is another program for residents that I mentioned in the letter. And I think there's, you should be aware that there's, there's potential for confusion among consumers because some people may like or not like that other, the, the one for residents. So when we're talking about this, it's just for municipal pilting. I did try to reach a number of these companies and some of them were so difficult to deal with, I, I decided not to put them on the list. I, I never really got anywhere. Trying to talk to people all over the country from these country companies who were trying to sell us stuff that has nothing to do with what we're looking for. So that's why we ended up with two on the recommended list. And that Constellation Energy, you didn't read this part out loud, but they are the source that's endorsed by the Massachusetts Municipal Association. And Kathy Thompson and I did go to a, a presentation by Constellation as well. And we, we got there, we did run into other municipal people like from, I mean, maybe Walt Pham or Walpole, I can't remember which now. But anyway, there are about ninety cities, towns using their services. You, you, you can't find Constellation online unless, in Massachusetts, unless you, unless you go to the Massachusetts Municipal Association website. And that's where you will find information about Constellation. Other than that, the kind of difficult. So that's it. I mean, I provided contact names and web addresses, email addresses for you. We've gone as far as we can with this. If you have any further questions you could ask. But I, I would also highlight that, and I don't think there's a lot of money to be saved. When you look at your electric bill, there's, there's both a distribution side, you know, electric services and there's supplier services. The, you know, out of a total of twenty seven cents a kilowatt hour, nine cents is the, is the electric supplier part. And then about eighteen cents is the distribution part. The only part that you can get reduced in the aggregation is the supplier part. And it's nine cents, nine and a half cents a kilowatt hour in my bill. And if you save, you know, a penny or two, there times tens of thousands of kilowatt hours over time, it will add up. But the best advantage of this is to help in planning because when you set a price, it'll be a firm price for a period of time. You don't have to deal with, you know, changes in the, in the electric rate during your planning year. That's it. That's what, that's what we've gotten. Hope, hope this, the town will take a further look at it.
What, what I liked about this idea, from what I saw from the presentation, one thing I liked was the fact that you didn't have to sign on for a twenty year time period. You could do much, a much shorter time period, you know, the three years, two years, whatever. And I will also say that our new interim town administrator has experience with electricity aggregation, but community electricity aggregation. This is this, the Energy Committee was focusing on the town buildings, the, the town's use of electricity. So anyway. All right. So what we'll do is we'll take this forward in one of our working meetings and maybe make some phone calls and exhibit.
I, I would say, I'd like to say, Ron, I want to thank you guys for your work. This is, this is really it's very helpful to us. It's also helpful for the planning stage. There, there's considerable amount of work that I see that's been done here and I want to applaud the, the committee. And we definitely want to keep you to help collaborate moving forward. I especially appreciate your, your energy, your energy plan for the town. I think that speaks volumes to.
To talk more about that.
Yep, that, that speaks volumes to where, where I know that we, we, the board have been talking about, we need to, to make sure that our planning efforts are more solid. And this fits right into, to where our, our policies are. So I want to thank you for that as well.
All right, great.
Second part of this, Ron, is the energy master plan. So we need to look at that as well. That was your second proposal. But before I go on, do we need a motion? Did we?
We're gonna put, we're just gonna move this to another, I would like to split, I would like to have one meeting for one issue and the other for the master plan. So.
Okay.
Let me, if you. One, one other advantage of this thing that, that we didn't talk about is of course, everybody wants to save money at this point, but we also have this big climate, climate crisis going on. And these plans will, will give the town an, at the option of choosing renewable sources for our electricity. It will likely cost a little more. That's not necessarily true in the future because hopefully the cost of those things comes down. But just to be running with this, modern way of planning and purchasing our energy would be a great step, you know, foot in, foot in the door to learning about it and getting the town used to the idea.
If the town. And this, this, this also dovetails with other grants that we're looking at because they do ask for what we are doing for our, our energy plans and, and they're looking at our, our carbon footprint. Are we focusing any attention on that? So I think that these issues are very, very important to continue.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ron. I wanted to talk about the energy master plan a bit. Because this was the other piece of what was sent to us. So I'm going to go ahead and read Brent's email, which I'm, I'm sure you have too. Well, Ron, you're included on this, as is the whole committee. So attached is the Energy Committee's plan for creating structure around energy projects and energy conservation within Townsend. We suspect that the end result will be an energy master plan, but we are leaving the door open for the subcommittee to determine what the final document would look like. Because of the current efforts underway around the town's master plan, COVID nineteen and nicer weather heading into the summer season, we believe it would be best to begin this process in the fall or winter. We are asking for BOS approval of this plan and blessing to move forward. If approved, we would also respectfully request that you begin to consider what would be best from the town and BOS to serve, who would be best from the town and BOS to serve on this subcommittee as outlined in the document. So then there is the document where you define the makeup of the committee. And, you know, a suggested process. So what I'm understanding, Ron, is that you would like us, and I'm going to read some of this so that other committees can be thinking too, of people to appoint to this process, for this master plan process for energy in town. And that in the fall, you, I see are the appointing authority. So in the fall, you would be looking for those appointments. Is that correct?
I believe that's what Brent meant, yes.
Okay, so I'm, I'm again just gonna read through this. A Townsend Energy Committee, Energy Master Plan Development, a subcommittee of the Townsend Energy Committee comprised of one voting member from each of the following, the Energy Committee, the Planning Board, the BOS, the Conservation Commission, the Water Department, and a town administrator designee who will represent all town departments. So the town administrator who they pick represents the town departments. The Energy Master Plan Committee will dissolve after a period of three years or after approval of the plan at town meeting, whichever comes first. Additional criteria, the Planning Board and Conservation Commission shall also recommend the appointment of one additional person to the mass, Energy Master Plan Development Subcommittee who is not on their board, but who will represent their interests. The Energy Committee shall have a second member on the Energy Master Plan Development Subcommittee. So there are voting members, five voting members, and then there are additional members, which is always wonderful to have.
Yes.
In total, the Energy Master Plan Development Subcommittee Committee will consist of nine members. Two from the Townsend Energy Committee, one serving as the Subcommittee Chair. One member of the Townsend Planning Board, a member of the Board of Selectmen, a member of the Conservation Commission, the town administrator designee representing all town departments, a member of the Water Department, one non-board member representing the interests of the Planning Board, and one non-board member representing the interests of the Recreation Committee. The Townsend Energy Committee will be the appointing authority for all subcommittee members. So this is a subcommittee of energy. One of the Energy Committee representatives shall serve as a Subcommittee Chair. The town administrator designee must be a town employee. All subcommittee members must be residents of Townsend with the exception of the town employee. So that can be whomever. All right. And then the suggested process, and this is, the final plans and process are to be determined by the Subcommittee Members. So it's to review all the existing town bylaws, master plans, rules, et cetera, that have any relationship to current or possible future components of an energy master plan. We believe the outcome of this process could be a new master plan addition to the existing master plan, a series of new bylaws or a combination of these. And then it goes on with the process, public hearings, rework, et cetera. But that is what this is. So are we ready to approve it? Or do you want more time to think about it?
I think we can.
I am.
If you want to move forward, let's move forward.
And so the, we are moving to establish the Energy Committee?
To to give the Townsend Energy Committee the authority to go forward and establish the subcommittee. Does that capture it, Ron, do you think?
Yes.
I move that we give the Townsend Energy Committee the ability to go forward with appointing a Townsend Energy Committee.
Sub.
Subcommittee to create an energy master plan for Townsend.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Just six and duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes.
Good job, Ron.
All right, thank you.
Ron, we appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Appreciate your work.
All right, I'll beg out. Good night.
Okay, good night. All right. We have appointments. And
What number are we on?
We are on three point one, the appointment of the election workers. Hello? I don't know who that was. All right, so this was brought forward by the town clerk.
Okay.
And she did let me know it, that it had said fiscal year twenty two. So that's why I put June thirtieth, twenty twenty two on. But she emailed me and said, actually, it's August fifteenth, twenty twenty one through August fourteenth, twenty twenty two. So is there a motion to appoint the FY twenty two election worker?
I move to appoint the following as fiscal year twenty two election workers for a term expiring August fourteenth, twenty twenty two. Wardens, Sharon LaCasse, Betty May Tenney, Darlene Coit, clerks, Joy Boys, Donna Pinkerton, Jane Jackson, Carolyn Bazinkas, ballot box clerks, Cheryl Semenow, Sandra Stevens, Brian Colby, Peter Buxton, Pam Hayman. Claire Cowpey.
Oh, and these are the inspectors.
These are inspectors.
And it goes down the column.
Okay, inspectors are Claire Cowpey, Donna Miller, Christine Hayes, Barbara Wheeler, Sandra Tuttle, Marie Barnaby, Eno Cowpey, Lynn LeBlanc, Sarah Stoll, Lisa Deborah Stoll, Lisa Shaka, Carol Berman, Anne Formsmann, Karen Clement, Sue Gurkin, Elaine Martin, Lindsay Moran, Janet Weston Snapp. And the counters are Jack Coit, Brian Genioli, and Ham Hayman.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Just six and duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. All right, so moving on. Town administration updates and reports. Are there any reports from board liaisons?
I just gave a little update today. We had a meeting today with council by a chief, police chief in regards to the Communication Center. They're putting together some of a little more information to present to the, to Patriot. And once we're finalized, then it'll come in front of the board to get a vote how we're going to move forward with that. And also this afternoon, we. And also this afternoon, we went into negotiation with the Fire Union. And we went over a few things, but we've asked to have that continued until we can get the new interim up to speed so we can make sure that all the money and everything's done properly. So that's where that stands today.
Thank you.
I know that the Planning Board has reappointed the Master Plan Committee, the current Master Plan Committee. I'm hoping that they can get a final document sooner rather than later. Really hoping that because there are some grants outstanding that really need that document. I, we have the, the computers all set up for the teen room in the library, but there is going to be some further work with that. There was also receipt printers that we put in that print out the receipts that go on to when they loan books and that sort of stuff. There's, there's been some software updates that were necessary on that as well. There are other IT issues, and I would like to, to probably request that at some point, the, the library with the library trustees have a meeting with Board of Selectmen to talk about a couple of issues. In looking over the IT situation, the library does have a lot of IT within their infrastructure. And I think it wise for the town to collaborate with the library. There's been a couple of options. That's director was was talking with me about some make makes a lot of sense. One of them is for them hiring a technical librarian. Never knew there was such a thing. But it would be a librarian that is deals with all the technology that would be able to install printers, kind of do their own little MIS thing. It would be on the library budget, and then we would basically supply, you know, any the, the funds for whatever MIS that we would need. I think that would take a lot out of what what we do for MIS for all the other buildings.
That's a really good idea.
But that's something we'd have to talk with the trustees about. The other is to be able to look at all the financing and see what what the the MIS is and put it, not necessarily as a budget item, but I think where it stands is that the library, when something goes down, the immediacy to be able to call a help desk and get something fixed is is more immediate than what we would have here in town hall. I don't know about you, but having, you know, fifteen to twenty kids in a room and a computer goes down and they're all having to write a report, I can just imagine what that is like. And it's also for for them reporting too. So when the, when the patron is there and something goes wrong with the technology, and they say, well, when is this gonna happen? And the librarian is like, you don't know, you know what I mean? So so for for them, I think on a customer service basis, it might be a good idea for us to visit that as well.
Yeah, I would agree. I think, yeah, I think it would be really good if they had their own tech person.
The other idea that that we were talking about is having an MIS person that would be dedicated towards the library. You have the salary, the library would pay, the other half we would pay. And they would, you know, we'd have to work on that. So many hours here, so many hours there. When to on-call, you know, that seemed a little confusing, but I really like the technical librarian.
I, I would like someone devoted solely to the library. That way you're not sharing because of the immediacy of the issues.
Right. And it's not just like the printers and at the desks and in the kids' room. It's also the meeting rooms. It would be, you know, the technology that's being utilized there. I know that the seniors use a lot of technology. For instance, their chair aerobics that they do, that's video, and I think that's through the internet. There are people that get the rooms that do, you know, I just, I have walked by and I've seen them do their their exercises and something's projected up on the screen. So I'm assuming that it has technology of some sort. I don't know what it is, but that that individual would be responsible for all of that as well.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea for that whole building.
Yeah.
So, okay, all right.
And then I have been working with the Water Department on the other issues that had been outside of the PFAS, as far as I understand it. They're still working with the the state agencies that they need to, and there's really nothing to report on that. I believe there's a water meeting coming up next Monday, so I will have probably have more information at that time.
There might be some sort of resolution to that pipe in that house, I do believe. Talking about that.
Yeah.
Did you hear someone?
Yep, there is.
Someone say.
Couple of options, a couple of options. We're working with town council and town council is is working with the Water Department, so we should have some sort of
resolution for the.
Well, we have some ideas. Let's put it that way. We're acting, acting according.
Good job. I heard that.
All right. Anything else? I have nothing.
You have nothing, Veronica? What's going on here?
All right. Announcements, communications, et cetera. I guess I would just want to say that Saturday coming up is Purple Heart Day here in Townsend. Just to let everybody know that, it's at eleven AM on Saturday here in town hall. So please come and support the town and our veterans. So that's all on that. Any other announcements or communications?
I don't know if this would be an announcement, but I think something I'd like to ask the board. We, as the board, took and had a lot of input and a lot of support from the community on the the wall, the Vietnam wall. And I, I want to, first of all, I've always wanted to publicly go out there and thank the amount of support that was out there. I'm gonna start with, you know, the high school, with all the support that the high school gave. All the football team came out. All the workers, several workers from the high school, the town, the highway department had employees. The Pox and Cemetery had employees. We had employees from town hall that weren't working that showed up, the fire department. I just really want to say that was an absolute outstanding job that everybody did. I got an email actually from the director of it just saying she was stunned how well everything went up and everything came down. It was kind of in record time, so that made me feel good. The next point I want to give is I, I believe that the organization gave out special medallions for certain people participating. And I don't know, you remember which what they were, one with the town hall in the back of Vietnam? Well, he gave me two of them. I would like to try to do something through the board so that we can donate. We'll get a plaque made up. I'll get it mounted and get those mounted because there's a picture of the town hall on the front of the, the coin, and on the back of it, it speaks about the wall, and I think it's something we may never see it back in town. So I'd like the, the input from the town to try to have that done and get it mounted, and I'd, I'd like to have that dedicated to the town.
Okay.
Now, we had a, do we have like a committee that that does that kind of thing? Like, I know we have the quote downstairs, and there's other plaques that are on the wall in meeting room two. Is there? Do we have a committee or something?
Like a plaque?
Memorial, something or other. Memorial Hall Gallery.
Put it out there. Somebody knows about it. Maybe reach out to me and, you know, I don't know how the board would like to do it, but I'd like it donated by, you know, to the town by the three of us, because all three of us worked on it. And I don't think we'll, you'll ever be able to get those medallions ever again.
Right. I agree. I think that's a really good idea.
I think that would be really important for the community.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm open for suggestions as how you'd like to move forward with that.
I think I'll look around and see if we have a committee that does that, I guess. Yeah. I, I think usually it's whoever is interested in doing things like that.
Well, if we can, how about if we, we as a board agree to do something, put it in the plaque? And then we can find whatever, whatever else that we need to do.
But I'd like some input from the board and, you know, I mean, I don't know if we need to take a vote on that or anything, or if we can discuss that out of meeting, that how we're gonna design it. I don't know.
I don't think we need to vote at this point. I think that we can talk about designing it.
And we will be fine being able to do that.
Oh, great. We have to talk.
Well, there's a couple of places that that do plaques. And if you explain to them what you have and what you'd like to do, I'm sure that the salespeople can draw up a couple of mock-up things, and we can bring it into the.
Let's have a motion to go forward to mount those medallions. I know I have one. I don't know which one I have, but I know.
I told him what I wanted to do. I was gonna use mine that he gave me. And I told him, he says, oh, my God, that's a great idea. No one's ever thought of that. So he gave me the extra one so that we can. So it's gonna do, there's two of them. There'll be one to mount the front of it, and then we'll have front and back. So we'll be seeing both sides of it, which is really, I thought, special.
Kind of cool.
Yeah.
All right. So let's have a motion to.
Can we do that even though this is just a?
I'm just thinking if we're gonna talk about it outside of the meeting. It's, it's, this is.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying, we're, this was an announcement, so.
Well, it's an announcement.
Yeah. All right. Let's just announce that we're gonna do.
We're gonna do it. We're doing this. Yeah, nice. I like it.
I don't want to take a vote because it's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
So I do.
Okay.
I agree. I concur.
Me too. All right. Our next meeting is Friday at noon, and I did just post that on this evening. We will also have a Monday at noon because the Board of Health can't meet on Friday. And so they asked to be on the agenda for Monday at noon.
I can make the Monday meeting. Saturday, I forgot about the Purple Heart Day, and I won't be available to jump on Zoom on Friday. Is that where you guys will be all set?
I, I think, well, we were gonna meet with Ross on Friday to talk about goals and objectives. That's one of the things. So if you can, it's okay.
I'll try. I'll try.
If you can.
What your thoughts on goals and stuff.
You know, twelve o'clock, right?
It's twelve. Because the Board of Health moved Monday.
So it won't be long at all.
We, well, we have twelve thirty-five. I had, I thought thirty minutes for Board of Health and thirty minutes for American Fly Committee. So if we, we'll, we'll do the first thirty minutes with goals and objectives and that sort of thing.
Okay. Thirty minutes, I'll do that. All right, that's fine. I'll do my best.
That works. All right. And so Monday at noon is the Board of Health. And then Tuesday, August seventeenth.
We're gonna have a break?
Next meeting, unless we find the need.
No. Russell Bell is out.
But I figured it would be good to take a week, which is what it winds up being from the ninth to the seventeen, to take a week and not meet and let our our TA get settled in. And, and then we'll work on the agenda the way we used to, I think.
Yeah, with pleasure.
With pleasure.
Yes.
All good.
So there, the Monday, Wednesday, Fridays are coming to an end.
That's really good. And I, I truly am looking forward to working with Ross. I think he's gonna be a great asset for the community and a huge help for us as the BOS.
Oh, yeah. It would be great.
Madam Chair, I move that we review and sign payroll and bills payable warrants out of session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Josh Sexton Duranian, yes.
Right. So that brings us to our, our executive session is at eight o'clock, so, and we will not be returning to open session. So in order to not keep everybody online here, and we have the other, let's make a motion to go into executive session and not return to open session.
I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, this is in regards to Gerard versus Town of Townsend and James Kreidler. We will not return to open session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Josh Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Calley, yes. And we thank everybody for coming.
Thanks, everybody.
Meeting.
Appreciate it.
And we will see you on Friday at noon. Thank you.
Thank you.